These are your friends. Okay, ready? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Candidates Night for San Bruno City Council. My light is on. We are pleased that -- I'm Betty Fleming from the League of Women Voters, and I will act as the moderator this evening for the Candidates Forum. I'd like to introduce the candidates to you. Then we're going to take a short break so that a member from the County Elections Division can explain to us the all-male ballot, which will be used throughout San Mateo County for this upcoming November election. All right, so let us introduce our candidates, who are Irene McConnel, Michael Salazar, and Marty Medina, in the order they are seated there. The candidates have drawn for opening order, and the closing statements will be the reverse of the opening order. In between, we'll rotate the beginning, middle, and end amongst them, so that no one has a perceived advantage to any position. And everybody's ready with that. I will turn it over to the San Mateo County Elections Division for an explanation.
Good evening. My name is Walfred Solarzano, and I'm with the San Mateo County Elections Division. This year, we're having an all-mailed ballot election. Just a little background. Last year, Assembly Member Kevin Mullen out of South San Francisco authored a bill where San Mateo would be the pilot county, where we would have an all-mailed ballot election. In the past, in other jurisdictions such as the state of Oregon, the state of Washington, and some jurisdictions in the state of Colorado, have done the all-mailed ballot process, and it has increased voter turnout. Over the past few years and off-year elections, we've seen a steady downward trend of low voter turnout. Last 2013, we had about a 27 percent voter turnout. So part of the reason why we're trying to do an all-mailed ballot election, to see if we can increase voter turnout. This year's ballots, this morning, they were sent out, so you should be receiving them at your home sometime this week or next week. And that ballot, it's going to be in a white envelope. Make sure you do not throw that white envelope away. That white envelope's going to contain your ballot, and it's also going to contain a return envelope. So once you receive that information, you're also going to receive a sample ballot booklet that's going to look like this. That sample ballot booklet is your guide on accessing information as far as the contests that are going to be on your local ballot. So make sure you review that as you're going over your ballot. And once you've finished voting, you can simply just put it back in the return envelope. The postage is paid, and then send it back via mail, or you can drop it off at one of our 20 locations surrounded around the county locally here. We'll have a drop-off location at the San Bruno City Hall. Also, on Election Day, we're going to have two universal polling places in San Bruno. One of them's going to be in the City Hall, and then the other one's going to be in Skyline College. One thing that's going to be unique as far as the universal polling places, say, for example, you live here in San Bruno, but you work out in Menlo Park. It's 7:00 PM. You want to go vote at a polling place? Well, you can go vote at Menlo Park, and you wouldn't have to vote provisionally, because the universal polling places, we're going to have everything connected. So rather than having to vote on a provision envelope, you actually get to vote on your own ballot on an e-slate or a paper ballot, or if you want, you can just return it. And again, we're promoting to make sure that everybody, you know, turns in their ballot in early, because what we want right now is we want an increase in voter turnout, because it's very important to us. So once again, that information you can get from us. You can call 562 -- sorry, 650-312-5222, or you can reach us at shapetofuture.org for more information. You can see everything that we're doing as far as the elections. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Pardon me. Do you have brochures also to distribute, or have you distributed? These brochures are handy explanations as well, more detail about the mail-in ballot. So there are some by the -- on the table by the door. So if you don't have one, please pick one up on the way out. Okay? Thank you very much. All right. We have introduced the candidates. Let me please thank you all for being here, and also thank the television audience at home. We do appreciate and encourage your attendance and your attention to all these matters of civic engagement. After all, the government is by and for the people, and so we hope to keep it that way. Right? The candidates have each received a copy of the rules for the evening, and everyone's agreed to them. Basically, I'll just hit the highlights for all of us, so we're reviewing. The candidates will have three minutes each for an opening statement. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes for a closing statement in reverse order from the beginning. And in between, questions will be asked from the audience, and each candidate will have an opportunity to answer every question in one minute. Our timekeeper, Marie Baldisieri, is sitting in the front row and has very clear signs to help you. If you have -- if you're doing the three-minute opening or closing, we have a one-minute warning, just to let you know when it's time to wrap up; a 30-second warning, to let you know it's really time to wrap up; and a "stop" warning, which means, please finish your sentence and stop. So I'm sure everybody understands that and appreciates that. This evening's forum will be telecast by San Bruno Cable TV, and we appreciate very much that opportunity to widen the impact of having a Candidates Forum. I think we're all clear on that, and we do understand that questions will be in writing from the audience. We already have quite a few good questions, maybe more than we'll be able to get to, but we'll do our best. And we usher Karen Bertrand. Karen, we'll pass out cards for you to write your questions on, or collect them if you want to just hold up your cards when you're ready, and turn them in to me. All right? I can tell already, we probably aren't going to have time to get to all the questions. I'll try to get to a wide variety of topics that seem to be of interest to people. If there is more than one question on a given topic, I'll probably sort of combine them, so you might not hear your question exactly as you wrote it, but hopefully the topic will be introduced, and all the candidates will have a chance to speak to it. So with that, I think we are ready to begin. The candidates drew for opening order, and the first person to give an opening statement will be Michael Salazar. Mr. Salazar?
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for putting this event on. I think it's a great opportunity for us to get to know each other, and I also want to thank everyone who made the time to come out here tonight. It really is great to see so many of you here. My name is Michael Salazar. I've been on this council for almost six years, and I'm married. My wife Sandra's in the audience. She's my number-one supporter, so thank you for being here. Sandra and I have raised our two sons, Michael and Nicholas, here. They're both teenagers now, attending Cappuccino High School, and we are all very invested in this community, and we love to give back to it. As far as my professional background, I have a bachelor's degree in engineering, a master's degree in business administration. And since coming to San Bruno, it's been my goal to share my talents with the community and make sure that I'm giving back. And that's really been my goal for the past almost six years, and I really hope to have an opportunity to continue to do that. I believe that in my time on the council so far, I have been effective in improving the way we do business in City Hall, making things more efficient, keeping things transparent, and making sure that we're making very good use of your tax dollars. So I certainly hope I have your support in this election, and I'm really looking forward to answering your questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
Good evening. My name is Marty Medina, and thank you to the city of San Bruno and the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I want to thank the hard-working volunteers who have been with me each step of the way, letting our residents know of their choices in this election. And to my family, Jeanette and Max, I know this election is taking a lot of my time away from you guys, and keeping me away from home. But I am compelled -- I am compelled to do this. I know I can make a difference in our city. I manage construction issues every day at work. It's what I do. I'm ready to help rebuild San Bruno, so thank you very much. In 1999, I was an inspector for the BART construction project as it came through San Bruno. I love San Bruno's location, its small-town charm, and its affordability. In 2001, I became a San Bruno Public Works Inspector, and the following year, I was proud to become a homeowner in the heart of San Bruno. Over the years, I have worked on various projects and made sure the streets, the water mains, the sidewalks, and the sewers were constructed per plan. It was a pleasure to assist our residents with prompt and courteous service. I made many friends and volunteered and coached San Bruno baseball. When Jeanette and I learned we were having a baby, I had to make a very difficult career choice. After nearly 11 years of working for you, I accepted a position with the Alameda County Water District as a water line inspector. I had the opportunity to advance my career and utilize my certificate in construction management from UC Berkeley Extension. Being a parent has been a life-changing experience for me. I am constantly thinking about the future, and now my family's own future is intertwined with San Bruno's. I'm ready to work for it. I'm ready to work for you. I hope to increase the awareness and the involvement of all San Bruno residents. For those that believe no one is listening, I hear you. I will always be accessible to you, and I will be your advocate for government transparency. When everyone has access to the facts, we all better understand the issues, and then we can make better decisions. I love San Bruno's diversity. Regardless of our differences, we all share the common goal of wanting to give our families a secure future. That begins with a safe environment, excellent schools, wonderful recreation facilities and programs with affordable and sustainable costs for basic services. Tonight, I look forward to sharing my vision to improve San Bruno. I am grateful to be here tonight. This election is about facing the biggest issues with fresh ideas and new vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Ms. O'Connell?
Thank you. I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters for conducting this forum. It's no easy task keeping candidates to a time limit. I would particularly like to thank everyone who has given me their time, energy, and efforts during this last campaign. I can't do it without you. I was born and raised in San Bruno and have lived here my whole life. I have a BA and a master's in education. San Bruno is where my husband and I chose to raise our three children, and two of them still call San Bruno their home. The city of San Bruno has weathered a great recession and a devastating pipeline explosion. Many lives have been changed forever, yet we remain a strong and vibrant community. The council has worked hard locally and nationally to prevent this type of disaster from ever happening again to anyone. We will continue to do so. I have deep ties to this community and work hard to make a place we all want to live. I founded and chair the San Bruno Beautification Task Force. We started and continue to manage Operation Clean Sweep, the Beautification Awards Event, and the Holiday Lights Program. Last year, to commemorate our 100th anniversary as a city, we planted 99 trees free in residents' front yards to add green to neighborhoods. The 100th tree, we planted at Cappuccino High School in recognition of the city's ties to that school. With the recent passage of Measure N and the upturn in the community, new development downtown, and a proposed hotel that will generate revenue for many years, we are looking at a bright future. We are excited that after an extensive outreach and listening campaign, the San Bruno Community Foundation is in the process of formulating their next steps. We look forward to cooperating with them and making major improvements to the city. However, for all our progress, there is still much to be done. We need to continue to invest wisely in our infrastructure and to replace our aging community buildings. We need to explore ways to use technology to work more effectively and to engage our community more extensively. We need, as a city, to expand our sustainable energy and zero-scaping options. These are my goals. Thank you.
Thank you. As expected, we have a lot of really good questions, and probably we're not going to get to all of them, so we'll try. Let me read the first question, and then I'll say where we are starting. The question reads, "Has San Bruno sold land to OTO Corporation? Was the land sale at a public auction? Explain the benefits of the subsidy to OTO Corporation to individual citizens." And another question wanted to know if candidates would pledge not to support subsidies to the developer. So since this is all about the selling land to OTO Corporation, we'll lump them together, and we'll begin with Mr. Medina.
I'm not in favor of providing subsidies to billion-dollar developers. It's very, very clear, especially in light of not having any transparency on why the subsidy is required. I've asked publicly for a copy of the justification from the city, and I have been told that it's in draft form. And because it's in draft form, it is not subject to public review. So until we can get the details for the public to look at it, I cannot support any subsidies for any development in San Bruno.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
Oh, thank you. First of all, no, the city has not sold land to anybody for any amount of money. So that's number one. Number two, there will be very open and public meetings and information and decisions and discussions in the beginning of the year about all these things that we're talking about with OTO and hotel development. We have made no decisions. We have not sold anything. We have not bought anything. We have not agreed to any subsidies. We will not until we've heard from all of you and we've had a chance to discuss it as a council. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar?
Irene is correct in that we have not sold anything at this point, and we are only in discussions with a developer. In terms of whether or not I support subsidies, there are a number of documents that are public record that are available on the city's website, as well as meetings of public hearings or public meetings that we've held regarding the topic. And I think it would be a little short-sighted to say that we absolutely cannot provide any subsidies to a developer. And when the time comes to make that decision, I think we need to analyze the financials around it and make sure that it makes sense. But a subsidy may be required. It may not be required, but at this point, as Marty said, we haven't seen all of the documentation that supports it.
All right. Thank you. For the next question, "How will you continue to fund current and retired San Bruno employees' pension and health costs?" Would you begin with -- we'll begin with Ms. O'Connell?
We have allocated certain parts of our revenue to those. We have actuaries given to us by PERS that explains how to do it, what to do, how much to do it. It's kind of a fluctuating thing right now. A lot of the tables that base the finances on what you need to contribute as a city are based on certain assumptions, how long people will live, what kind of healthcare they'll need. So we have put certain monies aside. We will continue to look at it and make sure that we do what we need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar?
The city's finance staff has been very proactive in analyzing those costs and making sure that we're funded. I think compared to other cities, we're probably better prepared to address those commitments going forward. And it's something that the council has been aware of and considers an important topic and something that's well-handled within our budget.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
Yes, each year, the city council is required to come up with a budget, and each year, CalPERS tells the city how much they need to set aside to pay for their share of the CalPERS retirement program. I think what the -- I think maybe what I'm reading to that question is how are you going to continue paying for that as costs keep on going up and up and up? And the key thing that we need to do about that is we have to make sure that we start looking at how we do things in our city and how we can improve the efficiency so we have the budget and money available to pay for those programs.
All right. Thank you. The next question, actually, there was -- there were a couple of questions aimed at the parking situation, but I will read one, and that will hopefully cover all the bases. "How will you address the ever-increasing parking situation in the downtown San Bruno area? With redevelopment in progress, parking will be scarce for local residents. Neighbors are becoming irritable with commuters parking in their neighborhoods." Mr. Salazar, will you begin?
Sure. Yeah, parking is definitely a concern in a lot of parts of our city, especially in the downtown area, and we are looking at the future where there's going to be a lot more people down there. We're definitely hoping for a more commuter-oriented development down there that will hopefully not impact a lot of the parking. And even recently, we've been looking at different studies that look at what we can do at the current time, whether it's permitting in the neighborhood so that we can limit the amount of people that are coming in and taking up the residents' parking. But it does continue to be a concern. We are looking at it, and it's something that we're definitely monitoring, especially as we look at new projects that are being considered.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
It is a concern. Every time we look at a development, we make sure that it includes mechanisms and encouragements and incentivizes people to not use a car or not have a car. There's -- through an organization called CCAG, they incentivize and pay for different parking, non-parking people, I guess you want to call it, that use the buses and the trains and BARTs. The minute we have received studies that show that the next generation of people, including kids my age, don't really use cars as much as we tend to think they do. So hopefully, that will help alleviate the situation.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
Let's make no mistake about it. Americans love cars. We love to have our cars. And the parking is getting out of control. I live downtown. I live about 300 feet from downtown, and our neighbors conveniently find ways to park, whether it's blocking your own driveway or getting somebody ahead of time to park in your own parking space or on the street. But I think our future, looking at that problem, is we're going to have to seriously consider having a parking permit program, because there are too many cars, and some people have five cars. Some people have even more than that. So without really tackling the issue, it's just going to keep on going, and we need to start acting on that now. And we can't continue to give parking exemptions to developments, because the new residents aren't going to have their cars. They're going to have their friends, and it's going to impact the current residents that live in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay. The next question. "Good quality jobs in the service and hospitality industries, including the right to join a union, are essential to the economic security of working families. Will you prioritize union jobs in negotiations with developers, including the proposed hotel development at the crossing site?" We'll begin with Ms. O'Connell.
I agree that living wages, or what's called prevailing wages, are extremely important to everyone, and this is an extremely difficult and challenging area, county, city, to live in. As you -- as we're negotiating and as we bring forward the development for the hotel, one of the issues is prevailing wages. And we, as a council, make it a policy to support construction, prevailing wages for construction. As far as anything else beyond that, I don't know any details, and I can't tell you really how far we're going to go with that. But prevailing wage is something that we strongly support.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
Not only do I support prevailing wages, but you have to support good wages for the people that are working in these office buildings, in these restaurants, in these hotels. It's unconscionable to think that you're going to go ahead and subsidize a multi-billion-dollar company, and you're not going to be looking out for the people that work in that building, serving the food, cleaning the rooms. So I am totally in favor of making sure that when we're going to do a development, we have to make sure that we protect the workers and make sure they have good-paying wages.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar?
I also agree that we need to provide for prevailing wages in our contracts. The current request or proposal that we put out for the hotel does include language around prevailing wage, and it's something that I believe the council is pretty unified on in terms that we do want to protect that. Beyond that, I think there are some limits on what we can enforce or mandate on developers, but I think everyone who's currently on the council definitely supports the local trades, and will probably continue to do so.
Thank you. All right. For the next question, "Did you vote yes on the recent water rate increase? And are you aware that water and sewer rates are 20 percent higher than in neighboring cities, and in our neighboring city, which bring in $2 million in water and $5 million in sewer compared to neighboring cities that faces all the same challenges?" So we will begin this time with Mr. Medina?
I did not vote for any rate increase. Obviously, I wasn't on the council. I did speak out against the rate increase while I was an employee for the city. I stepped up and said, "You know what? You can't continue doing this. At the rate that they did it, five years in a row, 10 percent increases per year on water and sewer." There was no other choice that was available to the council. It was either no rate increase or 50 percent rate increase. So there was nothing in between. Our water in San Bruno is the second-highest water in the region. The only region that has -- city that has a higher water rate? Burlingame. Okay? The demographics and the income, it's not even close. So we have to look at doing things differently. We can't rely on rate increases to pay for our infrastructure.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar?
I did not vote in favor of the rate increase, although I was on the subcommittee that recommended the program that triggered the rate increases. I continue to think that the investment that we're making in our infrastructure is necessary, and it was definitely a time to do it. I had hoped that we could somehow soften the blow to the rate payers by not increasing the rate so quickly. But we have been making steady strides in using those funds to make the improvements that are necessary. And while our rates might be among the highest, I think that as other cities around us start making the kind of improvements that we're making, they're also going to have to impose those increases.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
I did vote yes, so you can partially blame me. But we studied, and for the last 20 years, we've studied the infrastructure and what needed to be done. Years prior to that, very little had been done. In fact, often, the councils would lower the water and sewer rates just before an election so that they could say they did it, and then after an election, they raised them, which, of course, doesn't do anything for -- of course doesn't do anything for your capital improvement, and it doesn't do anything to improve how you receive your water and how well your wastewater leaves your house. The other part I want to say is it's inaccurate to say that we have no, we had no other choice than 5% or vote no. We look at the 5% increase every year. Every year, we can change it. It is planned out for five years for 5% a year, but after that, we can change it as we go. And other cities, why our rates may look high, many of the other cities include their rates on property taxes that we don't. So it's inaccurate to say those things.
Thank you. The next question. What are your priorities for the PG&E settlement funds? How would you propose that these monies be spent? We'll begin with Mr. Salazar.
So I was very vocal in the process of creating the foundation that I didn't want the city council to have a strong voice in that, and I did want, I wanted those decisions to come from the community, and I think the foundation has been doing a fantastic job in getting input from, from the residents in terms of how they want to see that money spent. And I fully support all of the work that they're doing and the decisions that they're going to come up with. I think we're in agreement that they're actually the same decisions we would have made as a council, and it just shows that the community has spoken, and we're going to see a lot of good programs come from that, and I support whatever decision that they're going to come up with.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
I agree with Mr. Salazar. I was not surprised by the listening campaign. The projects that were listed on the, after the listening campaign that were most heavily regarded by people were the same projects that were listed in our redevelopment document that was created over 15 years ago. So the same kinds of things that were needed then are still needed, and I look forward to a time when we can cooperate with the foundation and make something beautiful and wonderful for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
I wanted to clarify, because I think a lot of people don't understand, that the city council has the last, last decision on every single dollar and decision that San Bruno Community Foundation makes. Now, the San Bruno Community Foundation, they're working very hard, and they've done a great job getting outreach to the community. I attended two of the three meetings, and the three biggest things I heard there were they wanted a new pool, they wanted a new library, they wanted better parks, and one other thing they mentioned was also in downtown. My vision includes, we got to build that pool. That pool's between $7 and $10 million. We have to show success and build the trust within the community, so the next time we go back and tell them we want to do something else, we're going to get the support. That pool is old, we can do it. Right now, there's a drought. The best time to build a swimming pool is when there's a drought. Think about it. That's what I want to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have several questions which I will try to combine concerning election or appointment of some city officials. Specifically, do you support the election or the appointment of the city treasurer? And the city clerk, I believe, I'm sorry. It's awful to try to combine questions and you can't get them apart. And the city clerk. We'll begin this time with Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you. The city clerk and the city treasurer's offices have been elected since the city was incorporated over 100 years ago, and at those times, think about it, 100 years ago, it was pen and paper. There was no tape recordings, there was no video, there was no YouTube, there was none of those things. So it was extremely important that the city clerks record every word and were an impartial witness to what was happening. Now, we have it all. We have a video recording of everything we do. Skills and necessary attitudes and knowledge that the city clerk has are not something that are necessarily what anyone who is running for an office would have. Right now, to run for city clerk or city treasurer, all you have to be is 18 and a resident of San Bruno and a registered voter. You don't need to know how to type, work a computer, or do anything else. So those skills are crucial, I think, now for a city clerk, and they should be in an appointed position.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
I see it a little differently. I see the city clerk as an advocate for the public, somebody that is totally independent, that doesn't have to answer to the council, that their job is not at risk for doing their own job. I understand that we have an assistant city clerk that could help out the clerk in the future if there's an issue with performance. So I like the independence of the clerk. I can understand more about the treasurer where, in today's money financing, how much more important that would be to make sure the money is being properly invested and allocated. So I'm in favor of appointing the treasurer, but I want to retain the independence of the city clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar?
I think I re-summarized it very well. I first introduced the idea of putting this on the ballot, and we have the support of both the incumbent clerk and the incumbent treasurer on this. They understand that the requirements are a lot higher than what we currently allow by merely being 18 years old and a resident. And in terms of just, you know, their independence, I think both of these positions are heavily regulated by state law, and there's only so much that they can do, and they have to follow, have to fit within those guidelines. And I'm going to use my last 10 seconds to say that the community foundation only has to bring us their budget and their investment policy for approval. Everything else, they decide.
Okay. Thank you. For the next question. What is your position on granting tax and permit exemptions for the proposed hotel and Old Navy sites? We'll begin with Mr. Medina?
Until I can see the report that justifies why the subsidy was necessary, I can't support something that I can't see. The public hasn't seen the report. The council may have, and it was, if it was such a great report, then why don't they share it with the public? So that transparency there, I don't see it. Until the public gets a chance to review the documents, we shouldn't provide any subsidy. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Salazar?
Just to make a blanket statement about, you know, whether or not I believe in exemptions on permit fees, it is one tool that the city has in terms of providing an incentive and using it as a, as a tool to work with developers and getting things that we need in the community. We lost our redevelopment money a while back, and so that used to be our incentive for providing input into the development. And if an exemption is requested and appropriate, I don't see why we wouldn't provide it. It's one of the things that we can do that doesn't necessarily cause, it doesn't cause us to expend additional funds. It's something that we're already equipped to do, and if we can waive that and help a project move forward, then I would be in favor of it.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Salazar just said. All the exemptions that people are talking about, all the tax things, that's not money that would come out of anyone's pocket. It's money we don't have now. So if we don't do a hotel, there is no money. If we do a hotel, and because of the kind of hotel we want, the limited amount of rooms there are, the event room that we want to have, the underground parking, all those different things, because of that, and prevailing wage, by the way, because of that, one of the negotiating points is some kind of subsidy. That money doesn't come out of anybody's pocket. That is money that comes from a forward paying of the TOT tax. So if we have no hotel, we have no money. If we have a hotel in a year or two, if we do the subsidy, if we do all those things, which we may not do, then we would have money after that for years and years and years, up to a million-plus dollars.
Okay, the next question is, the new Caltrain station opened in April 2014. The city approved $800,000 for the Gateway Arch over a year ago. How did you vote on this issue, and can you tell me when you expect it will be completed? Please begin with Mr. Salazar.
So I voted against the arch. I didn't feel that it was a necessary expenditure, and certainly there are a number of other projects in the city that I would have liked to see funded by that money. At this point, the whole construction of the arch is on hold pending some other issues with Caltrain and the JPB. But if it does come back to the council to allocate additional funds, I intend to continue to vote no on it because I don't think it's a necessary expenditure.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
I find it ironic. The idea of the arch came from a citizens advisory board to the Caltrain station design. It's been, the design was under construction and advisement for years. The arch idea did not come from the city council, it came from the citizens, and I supported it. I thought it would be a lovely idea. As Mr. Salazar said, the construction of that and many other things that we're not happy with, with the Caltrain station itself, is everything is put on hold. We're dealing with a organization that has issues with us, and we have issues with them that we're working through.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
I wouldn't support spending $800,000 on an arch. Even though someone, even though a resident would come up with the idea, it's up to for the council to decide if it's a good idea and whether or not to spend the money on it. I'd like to spend another 20 seconds on the previous question where the idea of subsidies would come up. If we don't have the right to look at the plans and the details of a report of why that justification is required, then how should we be giving that money away? If I was able to see exactly why that money was needed in a report, then I can make that decision. So that's why I'm against saying giving subsidies to a billion-dollar developer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next question. What current city expenditures could you or would you cut and why? We'll begin with Ms. O'Connell.
I can't, off the hand, I can't think of anything that we would cut. We went through a very tough time during the recession, and we looked at every single position and combined some positions. We have fewer managers and department heads than we ever have had before. We have a very lean police station. We looked toward and adopted different technology, software to utilize our police officers better. So we have fewer police officers, but better coverage of the city. The same with our recreation. We have, it's like we work smarter, we worked better, we work, we work fewer people. I would imagine that many of you did not know how many people we had to either let, well, we didn't let anyone go, but we did not fulfill their, fill their positions, and you still didn't notice any change in service over the last five years. So I think we've done a good job in keeping service up and costs down.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
I would look at reducing our water usage. Everybody else around here probably has brown lawns, and I'm sure the city has as well, but even cutting more is something that they can look at. Something that we have to start thinking about in the future of, I'm sorry, sorry. Something that we have to think about in the future of how we need to allocate our resources, and water's expensive. The other thing to think about when there's a drought, a current, I believe, 31% reduction in rate or in usage across the state. So there's 31% less income to our water department. How are we going to make up that money? Do you think it's going to be another rate increase? We need to do things differently. We have to look at our methods, we have to look at our materials, we have to do our own design work in-house. We're currently spending over $400,000 to redesign an existing water and sewage, sewer lines in the Bel Air area.
Thank you. I just want to remind the audience that if you do have any other burning questions, would you please turn them in soon, quickly, so that we can try to get to them before we have to stop? So did we?
I didn't get a chance to-
I beg your pardon. I'm so sorry.
And not that I have a really great answer to it or anything, but for the sake of fairness-
We have to try.
Right. So I have to agree with Marty on this, that, you know, there's probably a number of things that we could do more efficiently, and it's been my goal since being on the council to look at the way we operate and look for ways that we can cut costs. There are some things that I have recommended that we bring in-house, and sometimes it's just not possible, and sometimes we have to do a little bit better job at vetting what the proposals that we're getting from contractors and also looking at ways to partner with our neighboring cities and find ways to reduce costs there.
Thank you, and I do beg your pardon. Sometimes I'm so busy juggling questions, I lose my place, so I'm sorry. The next question. Are there any more from the audience? Please pass them in, no, in writing. If you'll pass them, please, to Karen Bertrand. Okay. The next question is, how would you pay to pay for putting more police on the streets? We'll begin with Mr. Medina?
I've heard of a number of additional break-ins. I think people are on, have been looking at San Bruno Patch. I guess it's reported there more than other areas. And having more police officers is something that all cities want and something that I would definitely try to find ways to pay for. We were just talking about reducing expenditures. Reducing our water usage is one way we can find a way to hire another officer. And back again to bringing the design to rebuild our infrastructure in-house. We're going to be spending the next 30 years rebuilding San Bruno's water mains and sewers. We need to bring that capacity in order to do that work in-house. We must find those people, and we're going to have to pay maybe a little bit more to get them, but we can't rely on paying outside consultants to do that work for us. The lines are already in the ground. There's only so many places they can go. A sewer goes up and then has to flow down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar?
So the city council recently added another police officer to the payroll this last budget cycle, but cops are expensive, and a few years back, we had, I believe it was Proposition F out there to increase, find a new revenue source so we could add firemen and policemen, and it failed. So clearly, the people of San Bruno don't want to pay more, and so it does, it gets harder to increase that headcount without additional funding, without new funding, and especially when there's competing funding, competing requests from other departments. And I don't necessarily agree that more police officers are what's necessary. We've had a lot of success with the community becoming involved, watching out for each other, the community watch programs, and I think we've actually been able to solve a few crimes just because people are willing to make a call and get involved and put their name in. So I think we need to look at being a better community, and then maybe that need for more police officers isn't as strong.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
I'd like to clarify something. If you, if we spend, if we use less money on water, or we lower our water rates, or water rates somehow, there's no connection between water rates and paying for a police officer. When you pay your water rates, that money goes strictly to the water department. It pays for taking care of the water department. It doesn't go to pay for anything else. It's called an enterprise fund. If there's more money in that fund and we need a police officer, it doesn't cross over. So there's no connection that way.
I'd remind the audience, please, who are listening to the candidates.
The, we have done what Mr. Salazar says. We have worked smarter, as I said earlier. One of the things that we did was National Night Out. We, I went with the police chief, and we visited several people that had sponsored a night out and had the community and their neighbors get together. It was a wonderful thing. I challenge all of you who live in San Bruno to join us next year. The more people who watch out for the neighbors, for each other, the better it is for everyone.
Thank you. Okay. I thank you. The next question, and I believe this will be our last before the closing statements. Communication between the city and its residents is not as open as it could be or should be. Would you comment, please? Mr. Salazar?
I agree. I know that now that I've been campaigning, I've definitely had more interaction with the public, and it really is sometimes eye-opening, and I wish more people would come to the city council meetings. And I wish more people would come to the city council meetings. Our email addresses are public. A lot of us make our home phone numbers available, and so we try to make ourselves available to the public. And I certainly welcome any interaction with the public. I try to be as responsive as I can. I answer every email I get. If I get a call, I will respond. But a lot of times, we can't be everywhere all the time, and I just want to say that everybody in the public is welcome to reach out to us. And I believe I speak for all of us, that we are willing to listen.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell?
I agree with Mr. Salazar. One of the things I would also like to do is have an app for our city. Several other cities in San Mateo County have it. So on your smartphone, you would have an app that you could report potholes or down trees or other things like that, or just if you want to tell us about something you've noticed in the city. So that's one of the things I'd like us to work toward. We are there. If you have the internet connection, and you can go on YouTube, you can go on our city website, you can email us, you can talk to us, you can send us a note at City Hall, and we'll respond to it. So, you know, this is, this is not our day job. We try really hard to be out there for people.
Thank you. Mr. Medina?
I do agree with candidate O'Connell. We have to take advantage of the technology that we, that it currently already exists. But we can't forget, not everybody has a computer, not everybody has a cellphone. My mom doesn't have a cellphone, but my dad does, but, you know, there's no way to get ahold of her when she's walking in the backyard. So we have to do more. And as a community, we have to find ways to be able to remind somebody, and be able to have a website that's updated, but also maybe we have to send more letters out, more newsletters, and get this community really together so that we can really share what's going on in our city, because it's all pretty important. We have to stay involved.
Thank you. All right, we thank you, all the candidates and all the audience, for submitting a wide variety of interesting questions, and thank you for your thoughtful answers. We will have the closing statements now. Each candidate is permitted two minutes for a closing statement. And again, the warnings will be one minute, thirty seconds, and stop, please. And after that, I'll give a short summary of issues regarding the election, or not issues, items. All right, so maybe we begin the closing statements with Ms. O'Connell?
Thank you. And I'd like to use part of my minutes to say that the Focus Magazine that we send out, that the city sends out to every single residence, will be going out this week, so please look for it. So no computer or not, it will be in your mail. We are updating our website, and as I said, you can always mail or drop a note at City Hall, and it will get to us. My mother doesn't have a cellphone either, but she manages to let me know what she wants done. I do have a prepared statement, and I said again, "Thank you to the League. We appreciate your efforts in keeping our voters informed of their choices." While I'm a homegrown product of San Bruno, I have represented the city on numerous regional boards and commissions. I served for two years as chair and two years as vice-chair of the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, consisting of twenty-six members covering three counties. I'm the chair of the Advanced Life Support Joint Powers Board, the organization that established having paramedics on fire stations, on fire engines. And I am member of CCAG, the City-County Association of Governments. And because I was a member, the city received several million dollars through my efforts. I hope to continue representing San Bruno on these regional boards, to look out for our interests, and to make our concerns known. Twenty years ago, when I started on this council, a former mayor said to me, "Do your homework, decide what you think is best for San Bruno, and vote your conscience." I've done my best to follow his advice, and I hope to continue to do so. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Medina, your closing statement?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters in the city, again, for having this event. And I hope after hearing our answers tonight, you will see our positions and the methods of solving problems. We are at a crucial time, as San Bruno continues its long and difficult task of rebuilding its infrastructure. I believe we are currently on an unsustainable path of relying on the same methods, same ideas, and the same council. The record is clear. I want you to ask yourself something tonight, or in the next few days. Is our city better off now than it was five years ago, than it was ten years ago? And which type of San Bruno do we really want to have? Because you have two votes for council, and I'm hoping you agree that we can do better. We need to do things differently if we are to expect different outcomes. I hope you agree. The other candidates had their chances, and it's time for someone new. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar?
Thank you. So I want to thank the audience again for being here. We had some really great questions, and I appreciate the time and effort that you guys put into being here. It's next to impossible to get a really good feel for who we are from these little soundbites that you're getting tonight, and so I invite everybody that had questions and has a continued interest to reach out to us individually. We'll be here after the forum to talk to you. I have a website up, www.salazar2015.com. My contact information is there, and I invite you all to reach out and continue the questions. Let's dig a little deeper into the topics, and you can make a decision, a better informed decision. I'll also ask you to have conversations with your neighbors. Talk to them about what they feel, what issues are important to them. Ask them if they've had contact with any of us, if we've helped them with anything, and get a different feel, another dimension of who we are and what we've done for the community. I feel that this council is a better council than it was before I got here. I think we are making improvements. We probably have a lot more we can do to do a better job, but we are moving in that direction. Also want to thank people that have been helping me out with my campaign. I've got some really dedicated volunteers out there that believe in what I'm doing and believe I'm doing a good job, and I want to thank my family. My wife and my son are here now, and I want to thank them for letting me do this. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you all. I think we can all join in thanking the candidates for coming out tonight and explaining their viewpoints, and then don't go away, because I have a short League commercial for you. Let us thank the candidates. Thank you, and thank you, audience, for your wide-reaching and very thoughtful questions. I do appreciate that. I'd like to tell you a little more about the League of Women Voters. We are a nationwide, nonpartisan political organization whose purpose is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. So just like you're doing now, finding out about what candidates' opinions are, how they might represent you, maintaining that interest, and letting them know what you think. That's a very, very critical part of our government in this country, and we hope to continue that and improve it, because we always can. So the League is open to any citizen of voting age, that's eighteen and over, male or female. We are not going to change the name. It's been suggested several times, but we have really good brand recognition, so we don't want to mess with that. At any rate, you are more than welcome to join the League at any time. All you have to do is express an interest, and we would be more than happy to accept your dues. You can come visit our meetings from time to time and see if that's what you want to do before you decide to join. We maintain studies on various governmental issues, and then inform our members so that we can then, as a group, take a position and pursue our opinions, our positions, through legislation, and lobbying if necessary, and so forth. So we try to do, as we suggest you do, be informed and be active in our government. We hope that you will do the same. I'd like to thank the candidates again, and the audience, and the audiences at home. I'd like to thank San Bruno City Cable and the city of San Bruno for hosting this candidate's night. And I want to remind everyone, this is an all-male election. That means that you will receive your ballot in the mail. Don't lose it, please. Do return it, or vote in person at one of the universal polling places throughout the county. I think this is a wonderful opportunity. San Mateo County Elections Division has been on the forefront of really well-run elections and very thorough preparation and so forth for a long time. So I think San Mateo County is ideal to do this pilot program, sort of, see how well we can make it go. And the other part of it has to be that the electorate cooperates and votes by mail. So we hope we'll do that. At any rate, I thank you all once again, and invite you all to join the League of Women Voters, as well as to remember to vote by mail or in person for the election on November third. There are two openings for city council, and you see three candidates in front of you. They've all done a very good job of representing their viewpoints, and I know you'll make a carefully informed choice for your vote for November third. Thank you all, and good night.